Good evening, welcome to the August 15 Town Council work session. This meeting is called in order. Well cause you can see all members are present. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Remove.
Is there a second?
I would like to amend the agenda.
Okay, there's a request to amend the agenda.
I'd like to amend the agenda to include a motion to discuss the offer we received for Eleanor Trailers Park.
Is that under new business?
Yes. So, I either amend this agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's under new business.
Yes, I just want to know where you want to go.
Okay, there's a motion to amend, there's a request to amend the agenda under new business to include discussion on Eleanor Park. Is there a...
Second.
Second, okay. Is there a motion first?
Remove.
And that's your second?
My second.
Okay. Mr. Algen.
Aye.
Mr. Lyber.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Serby.
Aye.
Mr. Deller.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
And Chair Bud's aye. Okay, so we'll add that to the agenda. With that added to the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the amendment?
Remove.
Second. Second. Mr. Algen.
Aye.
Mr. Fodder.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Serby.
Aye.
Mr. Deller.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
Chair Bud's aye. Thank you. Presentations none, old business, we'll get started with new business. Yes, sir. Oh yeah, Larry, I'm sorry, real quick, yeah. This is a civil emergency we're dealing with.
Couple of things that we had on board meeting Monday. We increased the salaries of rescue squad, paid rescue squad. If you get more of them there, we're down four. We hope this will, I hope the other counties wait a while before they raise theirs, so we can have a few. The second thing is that we are going to advertise a additional, we have a tax relief for those people with real estate taxes under so much money. And Mr. Henson and I sat down and worked with each commission revenue that came up with a little more. I'd be more than happy to share that with you in case you wanted to do that here or whatever it's actually did cost, because you're not going to get that money in, but at least it's something in the right direction for some of these people. It's going to cost about $24,000 in the town income for that plan, which is roughly about $4,000 more than what it is now. We already have one in place, but we're going to make a little higher than that. Next thing is, hopefully next week I will have a check for you to help true up that sewer that the county uses and stuff and all of it. Appreciate the treasurer's office and the people that have got all the paperwork and everything needed. You know, you can deal with auditors too. You've got to have the receipt or whatever to make sure that you can show it to the auditors and they give you pay. So that should be coming next week, and I'll be more than happy to bring that up. And the last thing is, I thank whoever made the announcement because it was, I was told that the county was not giving anybody in town the mosquito business to kill all the mosquitoes. That's not the case. The towns and other subdivisions in the county were offered the deal to buy some. They are $700 or $700 for a box of about $200. They're not cheap. And they have a shelf line, so you can't buy a whole bunch and just send them around, but they will bad. So the county's been ordering them, you know, a few cases at a time for them in. And they're limited to five. I got a couple here.
So anybody wants a...
Yeah. So, there's instructions. It's poison, I don't want you to put out. Here, I think that's two. You go down to the county, now this is all part of your extension agent, which is the old.
Right, school.
All right. Any questions or anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anybody needs us, you can call down the extension agent, not the county extension agent who want to handle it. As you know, we do have quite a problem with the shooter.
Yeah.
So he need a receipt from us, our neighbor. He need a receipt from us for the town. When you go down there, you have to sign it.
Yes, sir.
But they told me I didn't pass nothing, but I was wondering if I had to bring she up here and get everybody to sign for it. I said no.
Larry, one thing before you leave, you were going to bring us at some point a breakout of our taxes?
Yes, and Mr. Roffey is working on that, and I talked with him about it, and he's still putting things together for that. He's tied up with that new school, tied up with, as you know, everybody, every, his house is favored, it's BEQ, and they're carrying on about well, my cross, so they weren't the big people today about that. And trying to put all this stuff together. So that's all done now.
And our FY '18 taxes for the town has gone up two cents, from 40 to 42 cents, is that correct?
The county went up two cents yet.
Did the yard go two cents as well?
I would say yes.
Okay.
I would say yes. You have to play that game of formula for the school.
Yeah, it's easy, so.
No, it's not. It's not here to tell you, I fully understand that school board, because it's a mess. So, all right, anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Larry. Okay, we might as well want to open with the motion to discuss the Eleanor Trailers Park issue, Bill?
You want to start with it?
Might as well, I got it at the top of the list, so.
Okay. As you all know, and I guess some of the community knows, we received an offer to purchase Eleanor Trailers Park about 30 days ago now. And it's a relatively clean offer, at least from my perspective. The terms are basically this, it's a purchase or sale of, as is, where is. The purchase price is offered at $900,000. The closing date shall be before October 31st. And it's a very, it's a very clean offer, and what makes it rather unique is that the purchaser has agreed to only build seven homes on that six, six, I'm sorry, six, on that property. And so, when we received the offer, we directed the town manager to enter negotiations with the, with the offer in order to solicit best and final offer. That best and final offer was for $900,000 and the, and the six lots. It's all cash deals. And so, what we need to do at this point, it's been 30 days, is I believe to consider that offer and to put it out for public comment. And before we do that, I believe we have to have a public notice.
Yes, sir.
Correct? So I guess part of the purpose of bringing up this juncture is for the council to vote on directing the town attorney to prepare such an announcement, so that we can address it at our, at our next meeting or a meeting to be determined in the future, a specific date.
Yes, well, I'll need to know a specific date.
And also, one of the things we were waiting for the mayor to draw up, rightly so, he would like to see where exactly on the lot the houses will be placed. And we're in the process of gathering that information now, is I understand. So we'll have that whole package together for the public hearing, and so I guess if we could take a vote on...
So is there, is there a motion to direct the town attorney to prepare a notice for a public hearing and to direct the clerk to advertise for a public hearing on September the 19th at 6:00 to consider the offer to sell the property known as Eleanor Trailers Park under the terms as outlined in the offer letter dated July 19th?
Does September 19th give us adequate time to, and that's 30 days, and the, I just want to make sure we're not wasting time here.
That's your pleasure, sir. I just picked the right...
I'm just kind of picking out loud for the...
His offer's only until October, what, 31st, 32nd?
31st.
Prioritize it.
Earlier or that, or 19th is better?
Yeah.
How much, we need two weeks to do a public?
It has to run once, seven days before the public hearing.
Okay.
It's going to be really, really important that he provides, like I said before, I don't care if you draw it on a cocktail nap, but I want to see the spacing of the houses and how it's going to affect Lawson Avenue as well.
Is the 19th our regular session? Is it?
We just got to remember, we can't...
I'm sorry, gentlemen, we can't...
We got, not to get into any issues on that, but we can't force any town requirements that aren't already in place there. You can't, can't for that official, if you should talk about it.
Maybe before you have a motion on the advertising, we should decide on the date.
Okay, let's decide on the date. What would, I don't have a calendar.
I mean, what is the October date?
So the first Saturday in October is September the 1st, that's Labor Day, and then the next Saturday is September the 8th.
Now, how about October?
Oh, you want October.
Yeah, what's, what would be the regular meeting day?
In October?
Yeah.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. So that would be sixty days.
We want it to happen earlier. We don't want it to happen earlier.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm trying to get the two dates determined. Do you think...
So, I guess the question is, do we want to have a special meeting or September the 19th adequate time to do it?
I think we have to think about some of the confusion we got to go through before we can actually bring this up to a vote. I think that there's got to, I mean, if all we're going is dealing with the same positions that we had previously, that no change, then we could do it tomorrow. But if there's any real chance of trying to satisfy a lot of people in a lot of different ways on this, I think we're going to have to find some middle ground on some things. And instead of just bringing it back in the same way, shape, and form we had it before. So if we think that we need some time to work through some of those issues and ideas, then I think we got to consider that. But if we're just going to bring it up the same way we brought it up before, under existing resolutions and ordinances for selling property, then it's going to end up the same way it was probably. And I just, I'm not speaking for everybody, that's just my opinion. And I think there's potentially some middle ground, but it has to, we got to have some consensus amongst ourselves in order to get anywhere off of where we were before, I believe. And just my opinion, I'm not speaking for everybody.
I'm just trying to get all the input as soon as possible, so we have some time.
But we got to be able to tell the public our positions as well. I think we have to be able to give the public some feedback on this issue at the public hearings. And I think we all ought to have our positions nailed down. If there's any opportunity for change or middle ground or so forth, then I think we're going to have to work our butts off to make it happen, or we're going to just be back where we were. That's it.
Okay. I think at this point, it was probably best if we just leave it at 19.
Okay.
Or September. Or September, I think, because there seemed to be a lack of willingness even to discuss another date, so.
I'd leave it at 19.
I think that's still a safe date. We got to have.
I think it can still...
I didn't cover it out there, anybody thought that we needed any more time, but now we've got to...
Well, I think, I think because this is a new offer, we have to go through the process of saying whether or not we will even consider agreeing to this offer. And then we decide, then that went on, then we get all the minutia, then we start dealing with all that. We first have to agree that, yes, that...
Well, the point is, I think we can agree.
I understand, I know.
We have a chance of getting anywhere past where we were before, I think we've got some talking to do.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, we got a work session on the 5th?
6th.
6th, okay, so certainly have it on the agenda.
8th.
Have it on the agenda of the 8th as well, for discussion. And then, so that'll give you another, give us another chance to discuss prior to the meeting.
But the meeting, the public hearing would be on 19th.
Correct. But it gives the council more time to formulate opinions and ideas and move forward, so.
So is there a motion to direct advertisement of the offer dated July 19, 2018, for a public hearing on September the 19th at 6:00?
Remove.
Set.
Mr. Algen.
Aye.
Mr. Lyber.
Aye.
Mr. Lehman.
Aye.
Mr. Serby.
Aye.
Mr. Deller.
Aye.
Mr. Rogers.
Aye.
And Chair Bud's aye. Okay. All right. Billy, got anything else? No? Okay, thank you. Is there anything?
I just have a quick question.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't open for discussion on that.
No, doesn't it make more sense to, to give that direction at our last, at our next work session, after we've discussed it further? We've still got enough time to, to post it seven days prior to the regular meeting. I mean, I don't care either way.
I think probably...
We've all agreed on it, but I'm just, I'm saying...
Why don't we look at doing it this way, though?
They've got the opportunity to change it.
We can change it at that meeting, yeah.
We can revise, it won't be out yet.
Correct.
We can revise the date of the meeting, it still has public time as well.
Yeah, the 8th, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that was just my question. Why are we voting on it tonight if we're going to discuss it in a, in a future work session and still have enough time to post it within the seven days of the, of the next visit, of the next regular meeting?
Get to public.
Get along forward. I guess, I guess I don't know what we're even going to be discussing in the next work session. Why?
Well, he's going to have, he's going to have a drawing and stuff.
Of course, yes, absolutely.
So that'll be a big part of it right there, and you'll, you'll have more time to...
Well, you know, we can all hide from that if you all want. We all know there's a lot of vigilance, council, and if we want to try to classify some middle ground and some consensus, if we do this or not do this, then I think that we can't just stand back and wait and flex our muscles across our arms. Let's turn our heads together and see if we can come up with something. If we can, great, if we can't, can't.
I got to tell you, I don't know what the middle ground looks like when I look at this offer. What does the middle ground look like to you?
I am not, my issue, I mean, I'm not ready to speak about it tonight, is, is middle ground on whether or not, how the deal's done on our side of it, not necessarily on their side. I have issues about the dollars and asset versus trading an asset for an asset and not taking money and paying debt down and everything else. That's my issue, and I'm not, I don't want to begin at that tonight.
That's not part of the...
It is. It has outcome as to whether or not I vote for the sale of the property or not, that's it. And I would like to be able to see if we can find some middle ground on it.
Why don't we make sure we put that on the agenda for the work session? That, that language on there as well, that what the proceeds would go to.
Yeah, you know, we may get some mileage out of that amongst ourselves and bring some of this program.
I think before we have a meeting on September 8th, we ought to be submitting our issues, not wait till the...
Well, I think we've all kind of done that in emails the last few weeks, I believe.
Well, then someone needs to compile it.
I agree.
It's not going to go through much emails, contrary to...
I agree. I think that somebody maybe needs to take the pros, I mean, they need to take the cons and kind and kind of be the orchestrator a little bit here.
I think the manager's...
Yes, we need to make sure that our staff are able to, how we try to do a good engineering and help win, to foster that communication.
Well, I mean, it's all fine and well that the staff does that, but these are issues amongst, between council members.
Right.
That period, I think it's not a staff report.
Since, since we can't meet legally, except from twos, it would be, it would be realistic for you to make appointments with each person and then have a set of bullet points and garner more bullet points from each council member.
Right, right.
And as you come in, you share those, and then, and then put it all together and then send it out, so that they're speaking points that...
I don't think that's appropriate. This isn't council, I'm sorry, I don't...
Go ahead.
I think it's a council issue. Bill's got a very strong position on this, and I think that Bill, we talked about this before, about we need to build consensus on issues internally in this council. So if we've got, if we've got people that are strongly for it and strongly against it, then I think one's got to work on, you know, whether it's Bill or you, work on creating consensus for the sale. And if Dallas or Frank or whatever wants to take on the consensus for the other side, fine, let's work as a group, and they'll meet or talk to one on one or what have you, because we can do that one on one.
That's what I hope to do.
But I don't think it's right to pull the staff in as being the clearinghouse on this issue. We got to figure this out.
We would actually use the manager, and he would put together the report, basically, that each of us, on each of us, how we shared our vision, how this is going to go, should go. And then we would have time to look over that before we met on the 8th of September. So we would come in mostly apprised of what other people in the council are thinking.
I know you can say this. The only thing I can say, the, the way that we've been taking each other's thoughts and comprising them in summaries or emails and then arguing about, it's not what I said, I think we've wasted a ton of time. Hey, I'm not trying to shoot.
No, I know, I know.
I just think it's a little easier, maybe, if, if we put the challenge out there, make it happen, you know, let's build consensus. And if it gets built, it can be built one way or the other, you know? And we don't have to decide right now, when we get back home, tell me, they don't want to think about it tonight, then shoot an email out to them, or say, yeah, I'll take this side of the tablet, and I'll take that side of the tablet, and then let's, let's work on the consensus and do it properly.
It almost seems to me like there's a, you know, most like a decision tree you have to go through. First is sell, no sell, you know? Either sell it or not. You got to make a decision on that first.
Do you really want to go to that first, or do you want to try to get some consensus?
No, I don't want to go to that first.
I think that that's where I'm at.
I think past that, what's the consensus? What's the middle road of sell or not to sell?
Well, I think the last time it was all, well, I'm not sure right now, I know one time it was three, four. I don't want to...
What's the, what's the middle ground of sell or don't sell?
I think it's use, use of the proceeds.
Okay, then we'll get to that.
No, I got to go in, I won't vote to sell the property without addressing the issue ahead of time.
We understand that. Sell or no sell?
It's just like, it's just like we're asking the man to give us a layout of the lots. I want a layout of what we're going to do with the funds before I agree to sell. That's what I'm asking for. We put conditions on the sale of him, well, I think we put conditions on the sale of ourselves if we've got any chance to come up with any kind of grant. That's all I've been trying to get across.
We've already got that, and I don't remember the exact percentages, but like five...
No, no, I remember you said we can change...
We can change, we can change anything. Can you talk about the work session? And a future council, you can change it.
That's correct.
And you can't lock in what a future council's going to do.
Unless it's set up in a trust like the Yacht Club was supposed to set up.
Where the, where the issue of time is of the essence is the fact that this gentleman's only giving us until October 31st.
I agree.
And so we have to have some kind of consensus on whether or not we even take it to vote to sell.
I, I think we're going to want to do that, but I think that we're going to want to have a sense of what we're going to be able to do ahead of time. We can't just wait until the day of public hearing.
No, I don't, I certainly don't plan on that. I would have a lot more information on what this guy's got in mind.
We want to really get some input and dialogue amongst us, and if someone can change my mind about something, bring it on. I would hope everybody goes to mind of the, of that manner to look at it.
Anything down here? All right, let's move on to...
Excuse me, I wasn't on the agenda.
No, it's, well, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be on the September 19th regular meeting agenda, right? By then...
You're going to put it on the work session?
Yeah, work session first, but by then, if we should, this council should be fully aware of all aspects of the sale of this property. Okay. And we will do everything we can to make sure that that happens, call some board. Next item is in tab eight of your books. And it is draft resolution 30-18, the ratification of the Memorial Advisory Commission. Did you want to speak on this, Kathy? Is this something you want to speak on? It's got your name next to it.
Um, yeah, I mean, actually, yes.
You want to give a history of...
Yes, it did. The, back in 2002, the town started a memorial advisory commission, and one of the things that this commission did was take care of the plaque and make sure that the names of citizens that had done a lot for the town or had been nominated and had gone through an approval process, that their names were placed on the plaque. Well, it's really, since probably even before 2012, the commission has just gone downhill. And it's something that many of you have expressed an interest, you want to get the commission back up and going, you want to get names on that plaque. So I looked at, I did the research on it, pulled up what we need to do. The first thing we need to do from council is, I need two of you to volunteer to become, to, let's see, to nominate three citizens that will sit on this commission. And those three citizens will then meet, they'll make nominations, and they'll bring it in front of the full council. So right now, in between this meeting and our next work session, we really need two volunteers, two town councilmen volunteers, just to appoint three people so that we can start this commission back up.
I bet you government don't stay on it, correct? They just create it when they're...
They don't stay on it. It's just a nominating function to, to nominate three citizens. And we may wind up with more than three nominations, we'll kind of see where it goes, but we do need two volunteers on council, and then, and then we can get it back, to get it back up and going.
Okay, good. Steve says he'll volunteer. Bill?
You want me?
Yeah, sure. Okay, Steve, Serby, and Bill Dylan.
Okay.
You guys, the rest of the council, okay with that?
Yeah.
Bill Algen, you okay with that?
I am. And as a total of three, correct?
Two councilmen.
Total of three nominations.
We'll have three nominations.
You and I kept it on. Twenty, yeah.
Okay, awesome. Very good.
Is it like the use of the term ratification?
It may not be. I'll defer to it.
Is it right? Or is it... Is it like the use of the term ratification?
Google it.
Yes.
It is? Okay. Google it. I went with Google, because Siri was too smart.
Yeah.
Corrected me all the time. Okay, next is in tab B, which is draft resolution 31-18, which we're to appoint Mr. Steve Kennedy to the Tourism Advisory Council. And we don't have to do anything tonight, we'll do that in September, unless there's some immediate emergency need, which Kathy, is there? No? Okay.
Can it be done tonight?
Huh?
Can it be done tonight?
Can it be done tonight?
There's, um, there's no recommendation, and the application isn't included.
Okay, okay, we'll wait till September.
Get my effort in.
Okay, we'll do a background check. All right, next on the agenda is draft resolution 32-18, which appoints Anthony Tony Swinson as the building official. And that's in tab C of your book. The first thing we need to do from council is I need two of you to, um, volunteer to become, um, to, uh, let's see, to nominate three citizens that will sit on this commission. And those three citizens will then meet, they'll make nominations and they'll bring it in front of the full council. So right now, in between this meeting and our next work session, we really need two volun, two town councilmen volunteers just to appoint three people so that we can start this commission back up.
I bet you government don't stay on it, correct? They just create it when they're...
They don't stay on it. It's just a nominating function to nominate three citizens. And we may wind up with more than three nominations. We'll kinda see where it goes, but we do need two volunteers on council and then, um, and then we can get it back, to get it back up and going.
There's one.
Okay. Good. Steve says he'll volunteer. Bill?
You want me?
Yeah, sure. Okay. Steve, Serby, and Bill Don.
Okay.
You guys, the rest of the council okay with that?
I am.
Bill Hodgson, you okay with that?
I am. And as a total of three, correct?
Uh, two councilmen.
Total of three nominations.
We'll have three nominations.
You and I kept it on twenty, yeah. My check's on there.
Okay. Awesome. Very good.
Just that might use of the term ratification.
It may not be, um, I'll defer to...
Is it right? Or is it... Just that might use of the term ratification.
Google it.
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Google it.
Right. I would just, I, it's not as different.
I went with Google because Siri was too smart.
Yeah.
Corrected me all the time. Um, okay. Next is in tab B, which is draft resolution 31-18, which we're to appoint Mr. Steve Kennedy to the Tourism Advisory Council. And we don't have to do anything tonight. We'll do that in September, um, unless there's some immediate emergency need, which Kathy, is there? No? Okay.
Can it be done tonight?
Huh?
Can it be done tonight?
Can it be done tonight?
There's, um, there's no recommendation and the application isn't included.
Okay. Okay. We'll wait till September.
Get my app here now.
Quick, get the background.
Okay. We'll do a background check.
Yeah, you are. Twenty twenty-two. And it's a mandatory important. I'm not gonna hold on to that all the time.
All right. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, draft resolution 32-18, which appoints Anthony Tony Swinson as the building official. Um, and that's in tab C of your book. Um, I think this is something we wanted to get done tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, um, I don't know if you've had a chance to meet Tony. I have a couple times. He has taken over the spot for Kevin, who was calling it. Um, he came recommended and I think he's getting most of all his certifications under his belt this time. Um, and...
Well, why don't you rock the process?
Yeah, yeah. Quinn, would you like to?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to speak to him. But honestly, Allison probably doesn't agree on it.
Okay, yeah, we'll both be in.
Uh, he's halfway through his certi, certification process. Uh, we fully anticipate him being done in under twelve months. Uh, quite frankly, I don't wanna pursue, but probably not over a month versus kind of close to a year. I wanna say two, two to three months and we think he's gonna be fully certified. Fantastic. I'm glad we have him. He's already had an impact to our operations. And, um, anything additional to that, I'm just handing it to Allison.
That's it.
I'd like to point a couple things out, just on the past and as we go forward with this. Um, most municipalities, the building official reports to, um, either the town manager or the, um, there's an umbrella person who is over top building zoning and, uh, excuse me, from the building grounds and zoning, as to, you know, departments underneath. Building zoning, uh, zoning and building departments are not anticipated to be one department, uh, or one under the other. The way the code is written in Virginia, there are two, especially the building department. It's a very autonomous department and it's a very autonomous role. Um, the reason that the town has the building official under the zoning administrators is because we used to have a zoning administrator who was the building official as well. And so the building inspectors were under visiting administrator slash building official. I really think that we have the right person and the right time now to correct our structure within the town government and we should do so. And, uh, one thing, zoning and building will always interact, but the actual hierarchy really should be that the building official is directly to the town manager in our structure here. If there was a person like King George County and even West Wallen County has an umbrella person that zoning and building comes to, our case, we don't have that, it's the town manager. But I really believe that we've got to get the building official and the zoning administrator more autonomous in roles. That's my opinion.
Okay. Such a thing to think about for sure.
Cause it's in our job description, that's D on the second page, being, like, answer to the building's zoning commissioner.
Okay. But that won't affect tonight's voting.
If we prove this and this is attached to it, then it proves the job description.
Right.
Unfortunately, I gotta be applying the order on this because this resolution, this resolution is not in accordance with ordinance 681. It's wholly insufficient as read on.
Okay.
Um, the resolution, the ordinance states that no new employee may be hired by the town manager if the employee is not fully licensed and or certified in accordance with state law and regulation unless a resolution shall have been approved by the town council authorizing such hires. That's one, that's the first one. The second point, in addition, the offer of employment shall be contingent upon the employee signing an agreement to become fully licensed and or certified within such reasonable time identified by the town manager and agreed to by resolution of the town council. So we need to do two things.
The second part we don't do, that's written in the law. The timeframe and so forth is literally in the law and, uh, which is what we blew it last time. So that is clear. And I agree, it's required, but it's very clear in the law. The first part, uh, I missed that. And so what you're saying is that I'm the prime person in property.
Yeah, but that's fixable. That's fixable. I'm more, I'm more concerned at this point with, well, number one, fixing it so that we recognize that this is after the fact approval or indeed a ratification. That's number one. But number two, I think we need to clearly have some timelines established for when we expect him to be fully certified.
Or in the code, and we can reference the code if you want, but we can't change it.
Well, we're not, well, then let's just put it in here, what it's gonna be.
Well, I agree with that. That's a conversation.
Well, you just what happened before. We hired somebody and we kept putting it off to the...
No, the, the code was totally disregarded at that point. It was well-known, the minister was ignoring. But I agree, this is what I was talking about yesterday when I said we need to refer to the code on a lot of these issues in the reservation so that we don't have to put all this in writing, cause it references the code. It has to reference the code.
So as I see it, there's two things we need to do. Number one, we need to recognize the hire and ratify and approve the hire. Number two, get the information that you apparently already have, how long it will be before you receive your certification and acknowledge that, that, you know, within a resolution. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Makes perfect sense.
Andrea?
Yes, sir. So this will go on the September work session.
Okay. All right.
Would you also like for us to put on the September work session, the suggestion of reorganizing the person to whom the building official reports?
I mean, I think we gotta start it out right. In my opinion, right now, it's not something to vote on. It's in, it's in 15-2, it's in land use and all that already. It's just a matter of following the rules.
Okay. So you wanna put that on the September?
You know, that's a question I continue to have. When it's in the ordinances or in the state law, why do we have to pass a resolution if it's not something we are given the right to either accept or reject? We have no right but to accept it. So why do we think we have to pass a resolution to accept the law that we're governed by chart with? I do not get that. And we continue to do that. It makes no sense. We are required right now to do things according to the law unless the code of Virginia says a municipality has either or. The only time that we have the right to deviate is when there's an either or, opportunity given for a code or a law. I don't know why we keep thinking we gotta bill in and accept laws that are already in place.
I don't have the answer to that now.
Sorry.
No, I don't have the answer to that.
A little problem.
Um, well, where are we?
Tab D.
I think that, your, your question, I think is left to the town manager and Allison, but I think I'm looking at the code to figure that out. It's in terms of tab, didn't you? I think it's the time to do this.
Will you, uh, Quinn, can you prepare and get with Tony and prepare the timeline and send it to the council so we can have it before the work session?
There's a, there's a posted calendar for certification days. Classes are only offered, each class is only offered twice a year.
Right.
And so it's, it's a very good chance he's not gonna get two to three months. Why they give a year? Because you've got literally two opportunities of scheduling paths to make it happen in a twelve-month period.
Right.
So I don't all into the twelve to two or three months. The core has, he already has the core, which is the ninety-day issue. He has the core and he's well into his certifications, but it's all a scheduling issue and they're only offered twice a year. I looked at the schedules today, actually.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Serby, he's signed up for all of...
Awesome. So we'll know what the last date is then.
He's even taking his additional courses so that he can make sure he gets it even before.
Okay. So we'll know based on the last date of the, of the last, cause they're all pre-referenced in this pack.
Yes.
We can look at that and those dates.
Yes.
Just give us a date and a timeline. That'd be great. Thank you.
He's very proactive about it.
Awesome. Very good. We're looking forward to having him. Okay. Uh, tab D, which is, uh, draft resolution 33-18, amends town of Colonial Beach procurement policy. And I believe, uh, Andrea's gonna speak on this.
Kathy, Gladys and I are gonna speak on.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Dynamic duo. I did just a quick seven-page presentation for you, um, a few minutes slide, just to talk about...
Can we get a little bit of why we're putting this today? What brought this up?
I will.
Let's get a little bit of that.
Yes, sir. So we have the Virginia Public Procurement Act. Um, that is a state law that directs how governments purchase goods and services. And that has been in place since 1982. Um, we have a procurement policy on the local level, which is authorized by the state code. The last time that it was updated was in 2010. And so, um, Gladys, you may wanna add to this, but my understanding is that the desire is to update it and to make it more flexible and, um, so that staff can do what they need to do.
Um, yes, I just, uh, a good procurement policy is where you begin with for your A B disbursement procedures. So, um, you know, I asked about it and nobody knew, really, that we found it and hey, you do have one, it's from 2010, they wanna take a look. Um, and, uh, this is a first, uh, pass, okay? Uh, and the only real changes were threshold, dollar threshold, just to, um, help. And also, uh, I added and recommended should use of the requisition, um, which has never been used, okay? So a requisition should always lead to a purchase order, okay? Um, the only time that that is, and then that matches to a receipt and then also an invoice and then that's in the group to go ahead and pay. The only things that are not subject to purchase orders are U2, which means that stuff, but everything else that is budgeted should follow appropriate request for purchase, okay? And then you make a decision as to a dollar level and approvals, okay? So employees, um, are subject always to budget. Everything is always subject to budgetary constraints. Um, so if there's no budget, I don't care how small the dollar size is, you can't copy it, okay?
Yeah.
Right. Exactly. And then the higher the dollar request is, the more review and supervision you want. Um, and, uh, uh, it's up to, um, everyone involved, from department heads to the town man, to the town council, to establish what those thresholds are. So that, um, it's a balancing act to allow, um, to facilitate operations via purchases, but also maintain oversight, budgetary oversight, and also fiscal, um, responsibilities. These are just suggestions and it really was just a first pass at it. Um, uh, this, uh, from here, um, I have to probably develop a standard operating procedure for dispersments. Um, in addition, uh, I think that, um, consideration needs to be given to travel and expense reimbursement policy, um, and also, um, in, uh, overall, um, if the town is gonna move forward and put, implement a system of P cards to help facilitate some purchases, there is a, uh, policy that goes in with that as well. Um, uh, you know, so this was just a first pass meant for discussion, um, and the, the key things are thresholds and bringing the concept of a requisition, okay? Um, we, we talked earlier, the, um, internal control improvements that were put in place, no more overrides, um, uh, and, uh, but that still does not have a requisition. They're just gonna produce a purchase order, okay? You still have to request that that purchase, okay? So you could have a, uh, you wanna facilitate, then you determine what that level is that someone can do without a department head approval. It could be zero and every, and every expenditure requires approval, um, department head, or you can establish a dollar, five hundred, a thousand, twenty-five hundred, whatever that is, to help facilitate their purchases. If you have a P card, that will facilitate that even more. The P card will have an internal control of input as well. So historically, the town has not had to worry about the procurement act. Um, it did not kick in as a legal requirement for us until our population tipped 3,500. So in terms of the town staff, it is, it is a relatively, um, new requirement. And a lot of people think that the purpose of the procurement act is to make the locality get the best price for something. Um, that may be an effect in some instances, but the purpose, excuse me, is really to allow for fair competition, to give people the opportunity to get the work. And so the, um, procurement act requires localities to deal with, um, to, to use competitive principles for the purchase and lease of goods, services, insurance, and construction. Next slide. Now, and this is what Gladys, um, was talking about, there is permission under the state law to, um, have, um, written procedures that involve some competitive principles that would allow for small purchases. And that is, that is what Gladys is trying to do to assist the, um, the staff in being able to function without having it be too cumbersome. Next slide. So it's up to the town council how you want, uh, the small purchasing procedures to work. But generally, there's a requirement that people get three telephone quotes or three written quotes for larger purchases. Um, that is your option, as well as the, the dollar limit ranges. So you do have flexibility if you review the policy and feel that it should be otherwise. Next. And there is also the ability to purchase a single-term contract for professional services if it's up to $80,000. So I reviewed what...
Can you put it back up a little bit?
Maybe not.
No, not to the sheet.
Yes. Uh-huh. And you should have, do you have a copy?
Yes. Here we go.
Um, so I have reviewed the policy that Gladys prepared. She's right, she just really added in additional layers of documentation and she upped the dollar limits. And the dollar limits are within the law. And of course, whether you agree with that, it is your decision. So thank you for your time.
Glad to hear a couple of the little caveat. Well, aside from the procurement, I think, uh, once we get through and agree to this, then what we do is, uh, to determine how to purchase a little bit, and, like, we buy sometimes numerous kinds of things, but connecting with price contract for a year-long period, uh, as well as term contracts. And I think maybe what we do is spend some time, uh, talking, talking to the board and telling them, uh, and then the government, what we do purchase regularly, you can see, okay, what do we need to get as a unit price or they, we gotta go buy lawnmower, we're gonna buy the same price for a year, period, same lawnmower. Uh, and, you know, if we're gonna do a term contract, a term contract, if he's on the parameters of it, it's one year, it's gotta be this, it's gotta be that. So I think that's the next step to this, is gonna reject the terms of the term, but now let's decide what's the best way to purchase, what we've been buying. And now that we've got actually a lot of track record of that.
I'd like to, uh, stick up maybe quick. So, um, these P cards, we definitely need those, because currently, if something's needed, Quinn or somebody has to go cut their own personal credit card out and then get reimbursed, which I just did to the town for, what, 1,200, 1,400 bucks. What was it, what did I buy that day? It was a, I don't even remember, some kind of, uh, computer contract or something we had to have.
Yeah, I think it was a computer one.
So, because we don't, we don't have the ability to do it by credit card, all right? So that's a given, that needs to be done. And if I remember, P cards, you can ride another jurisdiction and save quite a bit of money.
You can piggyback.
Piggyback that money.
Right. We, yeah, we've identified the contract, and we had a conversation with, um, the representatives from the bank that offered that.
Okay.
Um, and, um, Allen Baker has transitioned the contracts for him to be believed.
Okay.
He's definitely moved forward and made it available. Um, uh, we have sample, um, uh, procedures and, and policies that incorporate travel and reimbursement and use of P card that the council leveraged, um, rather than have it to, you know...
And then, um, a couple of things. As far as purchases goes, uh, in, in local government, I don't think it's unusual, again, to, uh, develop relationships and have riders with other jurisdictions, where you can get the lowest price, you can see the lowest price. So, okay? And then, um, as far as the bids go, it seems burdensome to get three bids every time, but it's not because you end up relationships with, with vendors and they can either sell it to you for $15 cheaper than the next person, not because you end up calling a lot of times the same three vendors, once you develop their relationship anyway, so. the same three vendors, once you develop their relationship anyway, so you're meeting the guidelines of the law, you build the relationship, and then, you know, some people can just, they can sell this, you know, X, Y, Z for a certain amount, and others can sell a little bit cheaper, but then somebody else can sell L, M, and N, for, you see what I'm saying? So it does, it's not that complicated, but this is how we did it in Arlington for a long time, and it just seems like it's a lot of extra work, but it's really not a lot of extra work.
I also think that, you know, again, if we look at the things that we continue to reuse, and repurchase and repurchase, and start fall purchasing, knowing that every year we use a minimum of like, in the summer, and a minimum of, and buy it one time for the year, and then if you go over the quantity, then you buy it by unit price, or whatever. But it doesn't last one time.
Sometimes we end up buying for a period of time, and it has to do with storage capacity too, now, so sometimes it's bought for a period of three months versus a year.
Well, season, a lot of times.
The items that you use regularly that aren't emergent and aren't seasonal, that I would use regularly, I think you can actually develop a list of those, and you put those out, and those companies bid on, and then you pick the three out of that, the three lowest, and then you use those throughout the year. So it's not until you reach a situation where you have an emergency, or, you know, something that's unusual, a valve or something in the street or something, that you don't normally do, then you have to go out and actually find new vendors for that. Okay?
So, Mr. Mayor, one thing I think that staff would like to know, I believe this was brought forward just because of the challenging nature of day-to-day operations. The cooperative procurement and the piggybacking are certainly things that could be incorporated into a later, more sophisticated policy. But I think that the intent, and pointing correctly if I'm wrong, that the intent is to free it up so that they can get done what they need to get done.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, well, like I said, I think the rest of it is the next phase.
So...
So I've got that down for the September work session, if you guys have any feedback for them.
Okay. Okay, so we don't need to act on this tonight, then? Okay, good, okay. All right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I have a quick question right quick?
Yeah, please.
Your line, for the speaker here?
Yeah. And I think the hearing comes up for chairman, like, too. Yeah, I think we've had some British Forests, one down the long side, we've had a little village. We actually have a, oh, excuse me, we actually have two quotations in, and they're actually two separate, payment is one, and that's for multiple things, including crosswalks, which made it rather significant, and beyond what I could really procure with, at least until I speak with Gladys. We did try to split it out as more of an emergency, and that I need to get the Gladys on to see if that works out, so, because it's, we could, we could move, but it's no concern about the dollar in relation to the procurement.
I would like to point out one thing, Andrea was, I think, being very diplomatic when she said, you know, it's kind of due to staff. Now, this is eight years that we've been a council of 3,500 people. We are still trying to get our arms around doing processes, procedures, right, and it's the new people that are coming in, and they're finding out what the reasons are. I appreciate your diplomacy there, but it has been eight years that we've been a council of 3,500 people, and it should have been more.
But keep in mind that this is a new, as far as this procurement, you know, because specifically, we do public works, typically looks very hard at procurement.
I'm just saying, in general, this is something that we've been going since 2012, and we have to some degree have not enjoyed it since.
Yeah, I don't...
I don't, I don't think we have to apologize.
That's my point, but I actually don't, I don't think that it's something new that just came out last month, this has been since 2010.
Yes.
This is just continuous improvement through its day-to-day operations. Yeah, let's call it what it is, this is us getting it right after all these years, is what it is. I tend to just rip, I don't...
Okay.
This thing was approved October of 2010, and it referenced the provisions of the PBA at that point, so we didn't...
Have we been ordered?
Well, I understand placing a first policy in operation is different than passing it, I understand that.
We got lots of work that's to be done before.
Andrea, is there something that we need to discuss about the other issue, moving to the planning commission, recommending to the planning commission?
If that's your pleasure.
Yeah, I think we, I think the zoning planning official would like to move this forward, if we can.
Can I take a little bit of that?
Yeah, can she read the, let her read this first?
Mr. Mayor, there's a request to refer to the planning commission for public hearing on September 27, 2018, and provide a recognition by October 13, 2018, to, I'm sorry, by, at the September meeting. At the September 27, 2018 meeting. An amendment to the zoning ordinance to eliminate the development standard requiring curved gutter and sidewalk to be installed prior to certificate of occupancy at the developer's expense on all undeveloped lots for the following sections. Section 4-6A6, development standards in the R1 residential limited district. Section 6-6A6, development standards for the R3 general residential district. Section 7-5A9, development standards for the resort commercial district, and section 9-5A8, development standards in the commercial residential district.
And so she, she's asking for a motion to refer this to the planning commission.
Correct.
I don't think we need to, I think we got a problem with that at this point.
Hang on a second. There's a motion, is there...
Yeah, somebody needs to make a motion.
I'm sorry, okay, is there a motion?
A motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss. Okay.
What we're talking about, curving gutter, when you do a subdivision, let's say somebody comes in with a piece of raw land, a developer owns a piece of property, and he comes in, he's gonna put state roads in and transfer them to the town, okay? In that subdivision, there's a requirement, which is called undeveloped land, where if that person actually owns the property, that will become the road that's turned over to the town or to the state. So it's not a state right-of-way or a town right-of-way at that time, so the town does have control of that in conjunction with VDOT's acceptance. Now, what we run into, and what Allison's run into, is something that was in our regular day-to-day zoning of existing residential areas, where we do have an undeveloped lot here and there. The problem is, is that those VDOT right-of-ways are already established there, and VDOT has their own requirements for what is done at the driveway and the drainage at that point. So what we've got with that one word that's in that is an absolute conflict against what we can control and what VDOT controls. We have no say over that anyhow. VDOT has exclusive say over the driveway and the drainage, because it's in the right-of-way.
Okay, let me real quick, let me just explain to the council, what's happened. So what has happened is, the language that we currently have to enforce is if there's a lot, and you build a home in Colonial Beach, you have to put curb, gutter, and sidewalk in front of that house, okay?
If the lot was undeveloped, ever.
Okay, but, so the problem is with Colonial Beach is, a lot of times, the sidewalks and curbs are on one side of the street, and then there's nothing on the other, so you would end up, if this, if we did this, you would end up with a small piece of curb in front of a newly-built house, and the rest of that block would have nothing. So it would actually cause more problems than it would help in the long run. Monro Bay Avenue has no curb and gutter at all, zero, so, you know, currently, there's homes being built there. What has happened, the reason this is urgent, is because there are people who were getting ready to break ground, and we had stopped it because of this language. What we want to do is move as fast as we can to amend this language so that these people can continue to work, and these folks can get their houses built. I mean, you know, obviously, it's hard to have contractors stick around while we fool around, so...
That's Andrea, but you know, Andrea, with VDOT, we have, every one of these properties gets a VDOT permit for the driveway entrance, for the right-of-way, okay? This is in that VDOT right-of-way. VDOT determines what they are gonna require of that individual at the front of his property that's in the right-of-way. That's exactly what this zoning thing is talking about. It's two of the same thing. We have no, what we've got written there doesn't pertain, so my question is this, is this something that we still have to do a resolute, because it doesn't pertain to anything in this instance?
Unfortunately, we do, but I understand you're saying it conflicts with what VDOT requires.
VDOT, no, no, it's not what VDOT requires. VDOT, it's VDOT's permit, it's not our zoning permit. What I'm talking about, our zoning permit is within the property lines.
Correct.
The VDOT permit is in the right-of-way, and the issue we're talking about is in the right-of-way. So it really doesn't pertain at all to our zoning issue. My point being is, being the fact that it doesn't pertain to our zoning permit, why are we stumbling on it now? Now, we can clean the berrage up later, but I think for clarity, the bottom line is, the driveway and drainage, unless there's a survey that shows the road way out of alignment for some reason, is under a VDOT permit, not our zoning permit. Our zoning permit stops at the property line, so it really should not keep us from issuing a zoning permit.
I believe that VDOT has turned some of that responsibility over to us, and especially since we're doing the land use permits.
But it's still, if VDOT deals with not these owners...
Sure, Andrea, it's really...
But it's still, anyway, you can tell, Rob, Rob, it's towards the change of ownership of the roads. No, it has nothing to do with that. The zoning ends at the property line, is my point. Whether you are the one governing the VDOT permit or the right-of-way permit, or VDOT is, what I've got, zoning stops at the property line, this is in the zoning ordinance, and I think that we can basically, in a way, clean the berrage up, that is what I'm getting at.
Mr. Mayor, council, and Mr. Servie, that is the problem, but the problem that I have is I cannot ignore it, so I'm actually going to have to require on private property for them to put curved gutter and sidewalk, on private property. And, and right, that's exactly right, you cannot, you cannot, it doesn't make any sense to do, and that's why I need to eliminate it, so I'm not bound to...
Can we expedite this, then? Why do we have to wait so long?
Well, one thing I was gonna suggest is that, what's it, September 27?
Why? Why's it too late?
Well, that's the next planning commission meeting. The next, it's too late to...
I think the council can...
Well, you wanted to have a joint public hearing, and that's what I was gonna say, with the planning commission, they could vote on it, and you could vote on it that same night. We have one advertisement, you know, once a week for two weeks, and then you'd be done.
Are we gonna, let me ask you this, are we gonna stop building until September 27?
I have, I have not been able to, I need to talk to the town attorney about that.
But I'd like to make some kind of amendment, temporary amendment to the current law.
Well, I want the town attorney to determine whether or not it's relevant at all, you know, for the zoning administrator. I mean, I'm asking the town attorney to look at the condition we're talking about and make a determination as to whether or not the zoning administrator has to follow that inside the property line.
For these years, we've done it wrong.
Yeah, basically.
That's unbelievable. Well, it's, when I read it, it looked like it got cut and pasted, is what it looked like.
It came out of the subdivision.
Yeah, exactly right, that's right. But in my, in my mind, it's not an emergency, it's not, I mean, it's not, it's not something that's gonna injure somebody, or something that's gonna have an untoward effect on this community, but what the untoward effect is gonna be on the contractors who have permits to do this work, on the homeowners and the property owners, the people who've got the loans, the contractors lined up, because you can't just sit on the contractor for an extra 30 days and expect them to show back up and move you in that same timeline, so...
Hey, I agree with you, more than anybody else, but we've gotta consider the zoning administrator's position.
I understand, I get that.
Right.
She can't do it because she's bound by law.
And that's what I'm saying, I got to be something, but I'm...
Would you like to consider a motion directing the zoning administrator to suspend implementation of the curb, gutter, and sidewalk requirement pending review by the town council at its regular meeting in October?
Yes, somebody second, somebody second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Aldrin?
Hi.
Mr. Liberman?
Hi.
Mr. Servie?
Hi.
Mr. Deller?
Hi.
Mr. Rogers?
Hi.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
Allison, I appreciate you for bringing that up, I would be, continue to root those kind of things out as we clean it up.
Thank you, Allison, thanks for your patience, I appreciate it. Okay, is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711 for the consultation with legal counsel and briefings?
87.
Okay, 87, excuse me, for the consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to litigation because such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigation posture of the public body, first Bailey, first town of Colonial Beach.
So man.
Say second?
Second.
On favor?
All right.
Aye, aye, aye. Close session.
I have that, I have that requisition. So I think we, you've fallen, how much, and you've fallen, I don't know, you've fallen there. Don't worry about it. John, you squandered over a certain threshold. Something with the internet.
Yeah, the wifi.
3,000, I don't know what's going on. I showed everything, I threw all my, you know, everything to my eyes, so I could look there.
The meeting's not coming through, I'm sorry. I mean, the wifi's not...
They, um, they don't...
That, that easy work, we have, yeah, with the wifi, yeah, we didn't know.
I wanna know where my curb guttering is, first time. I've been going down there. This is the end of the agenda. I think that we can consider it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they're just gonna come in and, we're gonna, oh, okay, yeah. All right, Gladys, you're, all right. Did you get a copy? End of the day, yes. We have to go in, we have to, okay, as far as your bracket, on the software, so what we need to do is set up another demo, so that you're comfortable with Edmunds, and bring Stanley over from school side, and then, you know, just do one. Oh, I'm thinking with my part of it, I, um... So you want the, there's still a question, are you happy, are you happy in meeting with the, about 911 address, and, and he said, he's had, he had some problems moving database over, he had the same company as we do now, and Larry, he may have made it difficult. Edmunds or Bead? Neither one. He talked a little bit about, like, the, he was talking about, well, he's committed as our email and all that stuff. I thought, yeah, it's 365, it's busy, isn't it? Yeah. Um, is that, is, not happening.
You have bubble which on your computer?
Oh.
But I think...
Those are the games that we play all the time.
I'm like, true, I think, you know, I think that we want assurances that...
I haven't even hardly is messed with this computer.
I just give people information from the Westmoreland VA system, so they can, you know.
But I don't know what's here, I just, I talk it.
Oh, yeah, wifi's been in and out all day, or do you not?
Level.
Because of course, I can't, I can't keep the contract moving on.
Right. Do you have anything that is...
So I just gave up, I changed, moved my phone.
Okay. You know, just, you have one way around and then get ready to have that contract so we can get us, we can, you know, do the, do the work.
No, this has been a couple times now, the wifi's all weird.
We can do this quicker.
And you're resetting it and everything, and that should...
Yeah, I'm reset, yeah, I went back there and reset it, I brought Rob back there.
Well, I've had more trouble since this gone since I saw Rob and Pat.
Oh.
Rob and Liz, than I ever did with my check.
I have, no, I'm only, what, you get that?
I've had a lot of problems, everyone's problems change though, but it's faster. So, it's out some of the time, but it's a lot faster, so I'm, it's whatever. But, yes.
For, you know, it's like, Negro connection or Tennessee connection. Theresa and Moss connection, okay. We, that could lose you. I can't, and, a thousand dollars.
Oh, one of them had a new voice on the TV, or, that one, that's, that's... I answered the phone, I was like, that's not Kathy, what?
So, or you could just find some...
I kinda, I kinda passed it along, passed it along, but I was there for it.
It just didn't sound right to me, so, like...
I know.
It just, it was cool. I kept it, I kept it, and he's like, why? I was like, it's been Kathy for years.
I've been getting a lot of that.
Well, but he's had, he's kept a little bit of your job, you are looking, what did you do?
Oh, it's, um, it's called plant hard, that's, I didn't...
Oh, no.
Oh, it hurts so bad.
I'm just gonna both his feet, yeah, it's horrible.
It is, it is, it hurts really, really bad.
Did they give you anything like Voltaren to rub his foot?
Yeah, Voltaren's very good. It's a, it has saved me.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's like, it's like Acuprofen, but like, in a gel.
Yeah.
So you cannot, you have to be careful, you either take Acuprofen pill or you put this, you cannot, because then you'd be doubling up. But I use it because I don't wanna upset my stomach, and it's, it's, you know, it's, Acuprofen and the gel.
Yeah, and I kinda just, like, push through the pain, because I don't like to take a lot of extra stuff.
Yeah.
And I just push through it and, but it, oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, and that's, no, you need...
It hurts, yeah.
Are you icing your foot or anything, and you're like, oh, I'm doing the little...
Yeah, and actually, ice is good for that too, my mother-in-law suffers from that.
I had it once before, a long time ago, and then all of a sudden randomly, it's just my one foot. It's that, healing is that, um...
And then also, there's a, you can, you can buy support, you can heal too, that rest.
And that's why I have...
You play in your shoes, yeah.
Right, that's exactly why I have it.
He's got orthotics that he wears all the time, and, yeah. But he's also flat-footed, the poor guy.
Oh, yeah.
But I use the Voltaren gel because I can't take Acuprofen, and only six percent of it gives up your bloodstream.
Oh, okay.
So, 'cause if you only have one kidney, you're not, you're not, it says or anything yet. It sucks, I'm just taking it.
Yeah, this, it's just really, and I had taken, I took aspirin earlier, and I thought it would be, you know, I thought I'm not gonna take it anymore, 'cause well, you know, just go home and...
Yeah?
Yeah. But even sometimes, I'll be just sitting there, not doing anything, and it's like a joke.
Yeah, that's what he...
It's just, you know, you're like, whoa.
It's, everything's like, real bad right now, so I, I feel for you. I mean, like, he was leaning down last night, his feet were like, rotten, swear that, that part is a little...
See, the public hasn't figured out yet why we do this, it's to get rid of them.
Yeah.
So it works every time. Why don't we start calling at the beginning of the...
I don't know, you got a...
Suzie's here.
Suzie's. I was wanting to talk to her.
Suzie's a guy.
Yeah.
You need to brace, you're gonna miss something. Do you know how many times it has paid off, you've taken an hour, hour and a half walk to this place? Um, I forgot. Where's the man go?
Uh, probably the mentoring. You should, yeah.
Is there a motion to certify that only those matters that were identified in the motion to go into closed meeting or heard discussed or considered?
So move.
Second. Each of you would individually so certify?
I so certify.
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 Thank you.
Alright, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.